Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here on Tuesday, September the 15th, 2015. It's 6:05 here at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. Uh, I do want to note that Councilman Laurel Perkel will not be present. He is still, uh, under the doctor's care. We do want to continue to keep him in our prayers. I'd like to call upon Pastor Larry Dixon with the Faces Assembly of God in Granbury to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by Councilman Tony Allen. All rise, please.
Father God, we're so grateful that we live in a nation where we can call your name openly and freely, and we can worship as we please. We're also grateful that you have admonished us as your children to pray for those that have the authority over us. And so, Father, as we come before you tonight, we pray that you would give these council members wisdom, and that you would help them as they move forward our city. We are so grateful for the blessings.
At this time, we will move into the consent agenda. The first item being to consider approving the council meeting minutes of September 1st, 2015, of the regular council meeting. Second item being consider approving Resolution 15-27, appointing the judges and alternate judges for the City of Granbury General and Special Election to be held on November 3rd, 2015. We do this, uh, every year with, uh, the, uh, election, uh, folks. And also to consider approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Granbury and Texas State University Texas School Safety Center for funding assistance. And this is to help getting some, uh, money funded, or get some money funded back to those, uh, folks that help us out there in the police department. And also to consider approving the purchase of three 2016 Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles from Caldwell County out of the 2015-16 budget for $104,005. And also to consider approving ordinance 15-40, amending the budget for the general utility airport and tourism funds for the fiscal year 2014-15. And this item here counts, if you read up on that, is, uh, basically cleaning up what we approved for the final, uh, finalization of the changes that were made to the budget. So, council, you've had an opportunity to look at all these items on the consent agenda. Are there any items on that, uh, consent agenda that, uh, you'd like to change or to pull from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Parsons?
Uh, I would like to, uh, pull item four, consider approving the purchase of vehicles down into the deliberation agenda.
Very well. Councilman Parson has recommended, uh, has requested to pull item number four, considering approving the purchase of the three 2016 Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles to the deliberation agenda. That will be placed at the first deliberation agenda item. Are there any more discussion or, uh, items that the council would like to, uh, discuss or to remove from that agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move number five also.
Okay, Councilman Couch has requested moving number five, and that will be the, uh, the next item on the deliberation agenda. Counselors, any more discussion? So, as it stands, council, we are, uh, we're going to be voting on item number one, two, three of the consent agenda for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion to, uh, approve item one, two, and three of the consent agenda by, uh, by Councilman Mickey Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman, uh, Gary Couch. Is there any more discussion on this council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Those consent agendas, items are approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda items. As I've noted, that the first item will be item number four, to consider approving the purchase of three 2016 Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles from Caldwell County out of the 2015-16 budget for $104,005. Councilman, uh, Parsons, if you've, uh, moved this to the deliberation agenda, would you like to, uh, talk about this item a little bit, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, these items were approved in our deliberation of the 2015-2016 budget. Uh, but, uh, earlier this week, I received the financial statements for the city for, uh, through the end of August. I think on a year-to-date basis, for something like $211,000 above projection on sales tax alone. Uh, and looking at the August financial statements on a year-to-date basis, there's $473,000 that would be added to the reserves. So, I'd like for us to consider, uh, moving the, uh, $104,000, $5,000 purchase into the 2014-2015 year. Uh, that'll still allow at least, uh, a minimum of, of about $400,000 going into the, uh, reserve of the general fund.
Councilman Parsons has requested that we move that instead of the 2015-16 budget to the 2014 and 15 with the remaining bu- uh, monies there. Council, is there any discussion on this item?
We would also ask that after, after we, if, if this is approved, if moving this is approved, that then, after that, uh, early in the next year, that we, uh, make an amendment to the 2016 budget to rectify that.
Okay.
The $104.
So, you'd want to put that in, I guess, in a motion?
No, I just, would be just, uh, ask management to bring that back.
Okay.
You want to reduce it by that much?
Yeah. Because we had some adjustments in there and everything, so...
If we, if we do this now, Mayor, we could, we could go ahead and get them ordered to- tomorrow.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait like we did last time.
Yeah. I think they're waiting at the dealership now.
I bet they are.
I would. I second the motion, yes.
Ava, uh, you might want to make your way up to the podium there. We might want to have some questions to you concerning at least that item, and maybe the next one following, so... Counselor, is there any questions to, uh, Ava, or any more discussion on this item?
Allen Hines is not getting another new truck, is he?
No, no.
Oh, good, okay. I've heard about that.
Well, with that discussion, counsel, if no more discussion on it, I'll entertain a motion to consider approving the purchase of the three 2016 Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles from the Caldwell County of the, for the 2014-15 budget.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Parsons?
Second.
Have a second, was that Mr. Allen? Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, counsel? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilperson, uh, Person Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That is approved, as, as noted. The next one will be item number five, which was moved off to the consent agenda, consider approving ordinance 15-40, amending the budget for the general utility airport and tourism funds of the fiscal year 2014-15. Councilman Couch, you have moved this down to the deliberation agenda. Do you want to, uh, go ahead and talk about this item?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like some clarification, um, on the IT part of this. Ava?
Okay.
Could you just kind of go through that one with us on the 43-5?
Yes. Um, for the 43,500 adjustment, um, during the year, last year, we had approved the purchase of a software called Energov. That software was, uh, for the permitting department, and I had an explanation in, in your packet that, um, it will ena- enable the city inspectors to be able to conduct inspection out in the field with iPads and access our system. And also, in the long run, customers would be able to, our, um, citizens would be able to access, uh, some of these inspections online. So, when the budget was approved, we were going to, um, have this purchase leased, lease purchase, but during the year, um, because we were unable to move forward with the purchase till the end of the year, we were able to realize that we had some funds available, and we pulled these funds together, and instead of leasing it, we went ahead and, um, would like to purchase it. And as you can see, those line items that are listed, we identified some funds in the Wi-Fi Department as Department 26. We also had savings in the fire department, um, in, uh, long-term lease, and we were able to bundle these savings together, and instead of leasing this software, we are proposing to purchase it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, counsel, is there, are, are there any more, uh, concerns or questions for Ava or anybody on the council on this item? Uh, City Manager Chris Coff.
I would recommend that we, uh, appropriate the funds as Mickey, uh, has outlined in his previous motion, to fund them out of this, do a budget amendment to accommodate that purchase of the vehicles using the surplus of the sales tax funds. So, we probably need to add that.
So, we need to add that this year, Ava?
Yes.
All right. Not that I don't trust you.
Nope, I'm with you.
So, do we need to put that in the motion also?
Yes, okay.
Counsel, is there any more discussion on this item? If, if not, I will consider approving the ordinance 15-40, amending the budget for the general utility airport and tourism funds for the fiscal year 2014-15, and adding to the three 2016 Chevrolet Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles to that, uh, to that budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Parsons. Are there any more discussion, counsel? If not, Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Item number five on the consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move down to the deliberation agenda, the first item being consider approving ordinance 15-41, providing for the, the revisions to the city master fee schedule. Counsel, as you read through this, uh, basically, there's a lot of things that the council, along with the staff, have identified, and the council has identified some things too, to, uh, to change, and some of those are, uh, in our airport building, and also some of our utility buildings and, and other things. So, uh, I'm going to ask Ava Gregory to kind of, uh, uh, bring us up to date on some of the things that we are, uh, planning on this revision.
Thank you, Mayor. During our normal 2015-16 budget process, we have had a chance to work with all the department heads and review the fee schedule, and give everybody an opportunity to review the fee schedule, eliminate any fees that are no longer used, recommend new fees that we perhaps not recovering, um, cost for, and, um, and to, to make sure that we effectively recovering our costs for services that we are providing. However, I want to add that this is a continuous effort. We are going to continue review our fee schedule and, um, to ensure that all fees are applicable, and especially with our current changing environment. So, this, this is something that you will see every year, because last time we reviewed the fee schedule and we had a complete revision was, um, back at the end of 2013. But our plans are to have this brought to you each year. Um, in your packet, you will see that, um, the addition to the fee schedule are highlighted in red, and any deletions are not noted with a, uh, strait through. We had added two columns. One of the columns lists the current fees, and the other column lists the proposed fees for easy identification, so you can see where the fees were changed. And if you, if you would go through the fee schedule, you can see that on page three, for example, we had updated the language for the long permit. Under the building section, we had, um, made, um, a lot of changes under the division five, five other inspection fees. We updated, uh, from $47 to $50. Um, we have added the commercial and residential plan review and changed the fee from $47 to $50. Um, you can see that the fire sprinkler, sprinkler inspection was changed from $100 to $150. Uh, we added some additional fees for licensed facility inspections, for sprinkler underground, for storm shelter inspection, for re-roofing for both residential and commercial. We also formalized the certificate of occupancy to include temporary COs, extension to COs, charging for duplicate, duplicate COs, um, such as, um, we updated our, our plumbing permit fees on page 14. Um, the mechanical permit fees were also updated on page 15. Under park and recreation, um, we had made some slight changes. For example, we have changed the soccer fees per person from $5 to $7.50. There are additional changes made under the aviation section on page 31. There you can see that the hanger fees were increased by $25 for tee hangers. And under the same section, we increased the terminal building office rental from $250 to $300, and from $225 to $250. And under the same section, the aviation section, we updated the charge for maintenance, um, hanger, and added an overnight ramp and hanger fees. And under the credit card fee section, we had uni- uniformed this section and, um, created a uniform charge. So, we went from a tiered section to a straight 2% charge. So, that will be effective for both online and in-person transactions for our departments, which are the court, utility department, police, and the permit department. And online, we will, um, be charging a convenience fee, the same, the same, the 2% that is not, currently not charged. And we also updated our media sponsorship section, and, um, you see there, we offer a full-year recurring program charge of $2,500 and a single episode charge of $250. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey Ava, one of the first ones I would ask is, uh, have we prepared to address folks on the credit cards that, that have been using credit cards and not paying the 2%? And then coming back and saying, "Well, I did not know."
Yes, um, so...
I mean, I know we're going to publicize it and all that, but a lot of people don't, uh, they don't read their mails, they don't read their bills, and then all of a sudden, uh, they're getting dinged with the 2%.
Right.
I may be one of them, I don't know.
So, we wanted to wait until the fee schedule is updated. So, our plans are the following. With each utility bill, we will have a section where we have the ability to insert a note, and we will inform the customers that starting, and the date I chose was November 1st, to give them sufficient time. We will be charging online. We will also send out, um, an ACH automatic withdrawal form with their bill to encourage them to sign up for that, because it's free. We will also have a message online, a message section to let them know that, starting November 1st, they will be charged a convenience fee of 2%.
And, and that's good, because, I mean, the automatic draft is probably the way to go, if people choose to do that, but, uh, to, to get them, I mean, we, we came a long ways with the credit card thing. A lot of people, at, what I understand, are using that, and I think the council some time ago voted to go ahead and, and waive that, or, or to take that fee out of that till we could encourage people to use the credit card. But now, we're actually losing money, I guess, you might say, or it's costing us...
Yeah.
To, to, for customers to use that like that, so... I just want to make sure that we have a plan in place so that these folks, you know, that are, that, that come up, that are accustomed to using the credit card, will know that, uh, no longer will they, it, will it be free, so...
Right. Yeah, we will definitely take, um, over a month to inform them, to make sure that everybody's aware.
Have we, did we calculate the dol- the, the amount that we would actually, uh, receive versus the ca- the credit card, the people that use the credit cards?
Yes, our cost is between 2 and 3%.
Mm-hmm.
And this year, the last analysis that we have done and presented to the council was showing that we were approaching the $100,000 in fees, in the cost. So, we would be, with the 2%, we would be recovering most of that cost, probably $75,000. Because there are additional fees that we have to char- uh, we are being charged on top of the fees that we get assessed from the credit card companies. We also have to, um, pay transaction fees to our, um, software provider.
Add a little bit, um...
We can add a little bit to it.
The Municipal Utility Advisory Board reviewed this as well, and have made this recommendation. Plus, we included this in the budget that we adopted, uh, as we did the numbers, so, um, we anticipated that this would be approved based on our discussions.
Very good.
And the support from the MUAB.
So, counsel, are there any, uh, discussion or any questions for both the city manager and Ava on this, uh, on this item?
I got one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Section 1.50.155, smoking exemption permit. Fifty bucks. That's how far.
Is it in red?
It's on the first, uh, yeah, let's see here, Mickey.
Page...
Page three.
Page three?
Page three, okay, thank you.
Is it in red?
Smoking exemption permit fee.
Now, what was your question, Councilman Allen?
What was the permit for? It's a smoking exemption permit fee that we already had for $50, and that fee did not change. Um, to tell you the truth, I do not know exactly what that fee is for.
We, we've got a non-smoking ordinance in the city limits of Granbury.
Right.
And I think the nightclub out there on 377, right off 377, is the only place that's, uh, allowed to smoke inside the club. Do they pay the permit? Is that what this is, or, I don't, I don't understand.
Alva, do you know?
They, well, they are exempted by statute, be- because of the nature of their club. So, they were, they were, uh, exempted by statute.
Well, I...
When we, when we considered the non-smoking ordinance, I recall that they were exempted.
Yeah, I, I was here the night, y'all, I went on council, but I remember it happened. But I was just wondering, why do we have the fee there if we got an ordinance that says no smoking?
Apparently, there's an ordinance exemption in there.
In that fee.
Probably is when that fee was adopted. But we can research that for you and report back.
I mean, it's no big deal, I just was curious to, why you need a permit for something that we outlaw, or don't permit.
Good question, counsel. Uh, we'll, we'll have the city manager and Ava research that one.
No problem.
Thank you.
Counselors, any more questions or concern on item number six?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may?
Councilman Parsons?
On page 40, we're, um, going to install, uh, charge a $40 permit fee for the installation or change out of a water heater or water softener. Uh, how's that gonna, and that's on page, did it say the page 14? Under 1.50.226. Uh, how, how's that gonna work on a busted water heater at 5 o'clock on a Saturday night? And you called the plumber, how's, how's that gonna work? You're just gonna trust the plumber to come in on Monday and take care of it, or...
That is a new charge that was added based on the recommendation that we have received from the building and permit department, um...
We could let Alva answer that, he's got up.
Okay.
Um, technically, kind of like you said, I mean, yes, it would be...
Alva, wait, wait till you get the mic, start talking, okay?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Excuse me. Um, technically, what you said, I mean, if they come in and say they have a busted water heater at 12:00 midnight, obviously, they're, you know, we're not gonna have an inspector to go out there when they do it. Um, the plumber would go out, and then, basically, it is an honor system, um, and then they would come back in in the morning after the fact, but we wouldn't hold them up and say, "No, you couldn't do this until 8 o'clock in the morning, let it run." You know, we wouldn't do that, so, I mean, we would, but basically, they would have to come in on the next morning and take out a permit, the plumber would. Now, again, that's an honor system, um, a lot of people do their best work after 5:00 and on the weekends, we all know that, so...
And technically, the, the plumbing code requires, uh, an inspection for any water heater installation.
Yes, it does.
Technically...
Technically, yes, it does.
Counsel, any more, uh, discussion or questions for Ava or city manager? If not, I entertain a motion to consider approving the ordinance 15-41, providing for the revisions to the city manager, the city master fee schedule.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman, uh, Parsons. Is there any more discussion on this item, counsel? If not, Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That ordinance is approved. Our next item is to consider approving amendments to the agreement approved on August 18th, 2015, between the City of Granbury and the Visit Granbury Incorporated. I'm gonna call upon, unless you have somebody else, uh, Councilperson Myers, to talk a little bit about this item.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say thank you to the city first and to Chris for just great collaboration already. I think that this is very apparent, that the city is committed to being a partner with the new independent organization, and, so, the contract is, is exactly how the four-member board feels, uh, will be successful within the contract. Everything that, um, that is in it is, is pretty standard with all the independent organizations that we've talked to, so we're very excited that we can move forward with the contract and have a contract in place by October 1st. Um, with that being said, I think that everything in the contract is agreeable within the four-member board, and so, if it's agreeable with the council, there weren't that many changes made to the contract, so I think that we are ready to move forward so that we can start an other process in place to get us started on October 1st. Mayor, I'd like, um, a couple of minutes to just give you a couple of updates, or give the council a couple of that, updates in regards to what's been happening the last couple of weeks.
Sure, sure.
Um, in addition to the contract, I just also want to thank Sherri, because she did such a great job giving us our information that we needed earlier in the week while our city manager was at a leadership conference. So, um, everybody knows that we're on a time crunch here, and that we do not want any delay from the time that we go offline with the city and the time that we go online with the independent DMO. So, with that being said, we kind of had to do some fire drills earlier in the week as we were talking to some of the contractors that the city currently has in place in regards to our public relations and our marketing and our social media, and we wanted to make sure that we were able to view all the current contracts in place and move those forward to the new independent if we, one, could continue those contracts, and a lot of those, um, contracts wanted to make sure that the city would allow us to work with them, and so, the city was very gracious in letting those, uh, contractors know that they are more than open to working with the...
than open to working with the new independent and that many of the items that have been used in the past will be able to transfer right over to the independent DMO. So we're very excited already about the collaboration that we have within the city. We wanna be very open with our records and the city's been very gracious to give us everything that we needed to be successful. So with that being said, since we met the last time, we've already received our incorporation with the state. So we're very excited about getting to keep our name, Visit Granbury. We had just one little hiccup that we were a little bit worried about because there was a company out there called, what was it called? Visit Company, which we couldn't understand how Visit Company and Visit Granbury sounded the same. And we did not wanna change our name. So we had to reach out to the owner of Visit Company and ask them if we, if he would sign a release and allow us to keep our name, Visit Granbury, because we want to continue with that brand. And we were very excited. He was very gracious, signed the documents, and we got the incorporation. So we are officially incorporated as Visit Granbury. In regards to the board positions, very excited. I mean, we have six positions to fill. Currently, we have four people on our interim board. And then we're going to be appointing one more from the city. So someone up here is going to be tasked with having to work with all of us. So that allows six positions available. And we had close to twenty inquiries for these positions. So we're gonna choose from about thirteen applicants and we're going to meet on Monday and finalize those applications and hopefully, reach out to the applicants. And we assure you that we are going to make sure that everybody is represented, represented, whether it's a hotel, B&amp;B, stores on 377, any tourism stakeholder or the criteria that Mr. Geis put forward. We're gonna be very diligent in digging through our applicants and making sure that we have a diverse board. In regards to staffing, I know there's been reports that four positions will be ending at the end of this month. Currently, it's our understanding that one of those positions has obtained another position within the city. One has been offered a position with the independent DMO and declined. One has offered, been offered a position and is in consideration of taking that position with the independent DMO. And one did not apply. With that being said, we are looking at staffing for our independent DMO. And we have talked about having the interim brought in as soon as possible. So we had three highly successful candidates that were referred to us by Mr. Geis. And we have narrowed that down to one person. She is a twenty-plus-year veteran of independent DMOS. She is going to come in in September because she already has a commitment the first two weeks in October where she'll be out of the country. But we felt it was very important to have her on board. She has looked at all our documents, has already made great notes, great suggestions. She knows our city. She's been looking at our webpage. She's very, very knowledgeable and we're very excited to bring her on board. She will be here the weekend that we get back from TML, that next weekend. So she's coming in next weekend. She'll be here for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Then she'll come in in October for three or four days. She's going to be working remotely in October. And then she will be in the chair on November first and she'll be here November first and through December, through our busy time. And what she'll be doing as well is she'll be, when she first comes in, she'll, she is going to start writing our search for our fully-staffed CEO on hopefully, January first. So we'll already have the search written out and posted to all the websites. So we plan to do an independent search and not pay a consultant to help us find someone to staff. We feel very confident with, with the talent out there and with the resources out there that we'll be able to hire our independent on our own. And as far as contracting, we, as I said, mentioned earlier, Sherri forwarded the contracts to us. We have reviewed all the contracts. We have had meetings with a PR consultant. We have had meetings with marketing and social media. We have our social media person in place. She is already logged into our Visit Granbury's social media, whether it be Facebook, Pinterest, Twitter. And she's already doing a lot of pre-work so that she will be onboard on October first, tweeting, posting on Facebook and making sure that there is no hiccup between the end of September and the first of October in, as far as getting out to anybody that's currently on our, what do you call it? The email web base, our webpage and our server. So we, we have all of the subscribers to the server and she's gonna be onboard with making sure that they all know what's going on in Granbury on October first. So with that being said, I think that's our update. Any questions, council?
Thank you, Councilperson Myers. Getting back to the budget, to the agenda item, are there any questions or concerns about the, the said contract that we have right now, council? I have one question for, I guess, Councilperson Myers. The one item there that I see where we change it from a one-year to three-year, why would we wanna do that?
Well, one of the reasons why we wanna change it to a three-year is so that we can recruit a very competent CEO. And as, as I mentioned, we're going to have an interim in here from October, for the month of October, November, December. And our permanent CEO may not start until January first if we find the best candidate. And with that being said, we, if we had a one-year contract, that person could come onboard in January and that contract would be expired in October for the next budget meeting. So we didn't feel like we could recruit really good talent for a ten-month contract. And we originally asked for a three-year contract, but that is contingent on an annual budget meeting and also contingent upon all the other requirements set forth in the contract as far as the DMO providing monthly reports and financials and everything else that we need. It just, it allows the independent to operate with the commitment to a new CEO onboard that they will have some longevity.
So you would hire a CEO for three years?
No, not necessarily.
Okay. But the thing is, and you answered the question there in your statement, the budget, every, each year, the budget will be reviewed with the DMO and approved.
Correct.
And so I'm still curious why we would wanna do, I mean, we go out here, we have businesses in town that we only give a one-year trial. And this is a new, well, it's not new really to Granbury, but it is actually a new venue that would be out there. So why would they not be on a probation period for one year, year-to-year, and then after they prove that, that they're doing what they say or using the money as they said they would, go into a three-year unless, for instance, you're, you're hiring somebody for three years? I mean, it's a one-year bud, a one-year budget every year. So that is why the contract, and initially, we consulted with the attorneys and the attorney said that would probably be the, what we would have to do because most people the city has a contract with is for one year. I mean, we have a city manager here one year. So what, I, I don't understand why the three-year contract, other than the fact that we wanna, well, you stated to get somebody hired, but it doesn't sound like it would be any trouble hiring somebody because you're not gonna give them a three-year contract.
No, but we certainly wouldn't wanna bring them onboard in January and say we only have an existing contract for nine months.
I'm sure you could waive that for a year. You know, start now, your contract ends in a year from there.
But if we say this is a one-year contract and it goes from October one to October one, then on October one of 2016...
Well, what I'm saying, they could catch up with, with six months, five months, four months, whatever the difference is.
Well, also remember that Geis' recommendation was a three-year contract.
I'm just not real comfortable with a three-year contract when we go out amongst people all in the community here and we give them a one-year contract for trial bases. We, we tell them, you know, we wanna look at what they do and there's no difference here than anybody else in the community. Council, I mean, am I looking at this wrong?
Mayor, with all due respect, all throughout the contract, if the DMO doesn't perform or provide the documents or disclose all through almost every page of this contract...
Exactly.
...then it could be a six-month contract. Because the city can say, we're not gonna do this anymore.
And ultimately, it gets reviewed every year, one year.
Well, I think it sends a signal to everyone involved, the commitment the city council has with this transition. I think that's important.
But it's not important to other folks.
The, you know, the Opera House is kind of another example of that. We did a five-year lease with them, knowing that any new enterprise has, you know, they have, they have bumps and, and things they didn't anticipate. And you've gotta give them the time to work through, through those, through those issues. So it's really, I think it's really about, it's a confidence level, not so much about the CEO aspect of it. So I, I'm...
So what, what are you saying?
I'm supporting the, I would support the three years.
Mayor?
Councilman Allen?
I guess I'm the odd man out. Most people in here know I'm kinda odd anyway. But I can see where you're coming from, Councilperson Myers, I really can. But my biggest problem with this is, is what the mayor just said. We hired a city manager that moved here, relocated for a one-year contract. And I've had many people, and my fat Chris and I joked about it today at lunch, about his one-year contract.
You had lunch with him again?
Yeah, well, I had to buy. But, you know, here's the deal. I think if anybody's doing a good job, they feel pretty safe after that first year. It is a big move for them. Whoever you get, whoever we hire, but I'm looking at them out of my eyes as our city manager, not who you're hiring. If we sit here and we're representing the people out here in our city and we say, okay, we're gonna hire the guy that's gonna control our city and we're gonna give him a one-year contract, and he does good, I guarantee every one of us would probably vote to give him two next time. I promise him three, Chris. But, but I'm seeing on your deal, I can see what you're, where you're coming from, Rose, but honestly, I'm a one-year. I'm a one-year on it, with, with an option. But if we can't discuss Chris's contract, but if it's different, I'd probably look at it different. But I don't think that's fair to him.
And that's exactly what I'm saying. You know, we put people on probations all the time out there in the city. And I'm, I'm not opposed to, after the one-year contract or a year and a half, year and six months contract, or however it ends up being, when we take another look at this, just like any other business that we have out there that we put them on a contract, on a probationary period, look at that again. And if, and if the council decides to put that on a long-term, even a five-year contract, Mr. Couch, we could do that. But I think going out, coming out of the chute with something like this, and as important as it is, and you're using, we're using city money, we're using taxpayers' money when we talk about the general fund here, then we should take a real good look at this and not put ourselves in a, in a position to have to renegotiate from a three-year contract even though they have not met the obligations. And, and I understand that if the obligations are not met, then even six months, it could be void. But you still have to look at what kinda contract you've entered into. And if the person that's coming or if the, if the employment, if hiring the people is not in the equation, then the one-year contract is, I'm like Councilman Allen, I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with giving them one-year contracts so that I can take a look at them at the budget and, and take a look at what, what direction we're going here.
Well, again, for me, it's not about the CEO. It's about...
No, not with me either.
It's about the confidence in, in the, in the transition and giving them the, the ability to succeed. And frankly, I don't wanna be discussing this in a year on whether or not we're gonna keep a DMO.
We will be. Every year, we will discuss it at the budget. Council, any more discussion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the amendments to the agreement approved on August 18th, 2015, between the city of Granbury and Visit Granbury, Inc.
We got a motion to consider approving the amendments to the agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Is there any more discussion, council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
That amendment is approved. At this time, item, at this time, council, there is no executive session. Are there any more discussions at, at this time, council? If not, the council meeting is adjourned.